Meeting for Tuesday, June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We'll call a meeting to order. Approve the council agenda and any addi- agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, I don't have any additions or corrections for you tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda that stands second.
Motion by Dave, second by Tim to approve the agenda and then a little discussion. One in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll say nay. Motion carries. Invitations from Harvest Commission Church. Good evening.
Good evening. So, uh, first thing I'd like to do is thank you for the opportunity to come and to pray with you and for you. And for this meeting, if we bow our heads. Father, we just thank you for this council that sits before us today. We know that sometimes it's a thankless job, that you get a lot of grief, but we are truly blessed that we have a council that's willing to serve this great city. And we ask that you would just grant them wisdom and truth as they make the decisions and the hard decisions sometimes to guide and direct this city. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Next, a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Anybody have anything tonight?
We did have a real nice Memorial Day service. Was well attended, so thanks for the VF and Allegion for putting that on. Uh, we do have a couple of things underneath there. Minnesota Recreation and Park Association Award of Excellence is the Fireman's Park Project. And also, we have the Bicycle Friendly Community Silver Designation.
Good evening. Mayor and council members of the great city of Hutchinson. My name is Nick Jacobs. I am the Parks and Recreation Director for the city of Otsego. Tonight, I am here on behalf of the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association Awards Committee to present the city of Hutchinson with an Award of Excellence for the Fireman's Park Project. However, before I do that, let me take a few minutes to tell about you about the Minnesota Parks and Recreation Association. The Minnesota Recreation and Park Association was formed in nineteen thirty-seven to foster the growth and development for the parks and recreation profession throughout the state. Presently, we have nearly nine hundred professional, corporate, board and commission, student, and retiree members throughout the state. Members of the association come from municipal, county, state, district, commercial, and private agencies. The Minnesota Recreation and Park Association office is located in Fridley. The MRPA Awards Committee was created in nineteen eighty-seven with the purpose of acknowledging individual members and agencies for their excellence in the field of parks and recreation and leisure services. The Awards Committee members represent a cross-section of the association members from the state of Minnesota. The Awards Committee feels it is important to increase awareness of the appreciation for the excellent parks, trails, and facilities, recreation programs, and services that are occurring in Minnesota. That is why the Awards of Excellence Program was created. The Awards of Excellence Program is presented by Minnesota Recreation and Park Association and proudly is sponsored by our partner, Highway Credit Union. The Awards of Excellence is an annual program of the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association that was solely created to recognize agencies and their staff for an exemplary project that was implemented in two thousand twenty-two or received substantial revisions in two thousand twenty-two. MRPA members may nominate projects for an Award of Excellence in seven different categories. Management or management strategies, communications, park and facility, programming and events, sponsorships and partnerships, sustainability and volunteer initiatives. Nominations are received, and then they're reviewed, evaluated, and scored by Awards Committee members. Only the top-scoring nominations are selected to receive an Award of Excellence. On behalf of the MRPA Awards Committee, it is my pleasure tonight to present an Award of Excellence in the spawn- excuse me, in the parks category to the city of Hutchinson, Parks and Recreation, and Community Education Department for the Fireman's Park Community Playground Project. There were many factors that led to this project being selected for this award. I was, uh, actually out in the middle early tonight, went over and saw it myself. Very cool to see that themed park. Uh, the history of such a great partnership dating back to the nineteen thirties. The uniquely themed playground truly represents how special the fire departments and the importance of them to the support of the community and the funding efforts, uh, to help bring this project to reality. Uh, like I said, the level of support from the city, the fire department, and the community speak to how incredible the city of Hutchinson is. A big congratulations to a well-deserved community. Thank you for letting me attend tonight's meeting and present this award to everyone who helped make this project a success. So, thank you. And you have an award tonight to present, so whoever would like to come receive the award.
Mike, I think.
Randy.
We're all from your department, and Lynn obviously represents- Lynn and Sarah from the Parks Department, I don't know.
Congratulations.
All right, uh, do we need a motion to accept that?
Nope.
All right, so, all right, moving on, uh, public comment?
No, Gary, we still have the bicycle friendly.
Sorry, I blew up. Yeah.
Exciting night for parks tonight. Good evening, um, city council members. So, uh, Hutchinson has committed to making biking better for everyone, and we are now certified as a silver bicycle-friendly community. Um, we're super excited about this. As in previous years, we had been a bronze designated bicycle-friendly community. Um, it's a four-year designation, so every four years we have to reapply for this designation. Um, and for the past eight years, we had been bronze. So it just shows, um, the collaborative effort between the city, the schools, and the community. Uh, for all of us that we've been making strides, um, infrastructure, education, community engagement, a bunch of different things to make our community more bicycle-friendly for everyone. Um, just to put it into numbers a little bit. Um, so there are five hundred and six communities throughout the United States that are designated as bicycle-friendly communities. Um, there are three hundred and forty-nine bronze, hundred and sixteen silver, thirty-six gold, and five platinum. Um, that's throughout the United States. To break it down just in Minnesota, Minnesota is the number five-ranked bicycle-friendly state in the United States. Um, currently in Minnesota, after this new round of applications, there's one gold community, nine silver communities, and twenty-five bronze communities in Minnesota. So Hutchinson is now one of nine communities throughout the state of Minnesota to hold this certification. So we're very proud to, uh, move up for that certification.
Congrats on your work.
So Lynn, what goes into the, the designation, just maybe for the public and the council?
Yeah, great question. So, um, they did a huge revamp of the application process this past year. And so there's really five E's that they grade you on, and Sarah can attest to this. We spent lots of hours, and Mike Stifter, Public Works Director as well, too. Um, lots of time went into not even filling out the application, but also just the things we've been doing to earn this designation. Uh, but the five E's that they really touched on throughout the application are equity and accessibility, engineering, education, encouragement, and evaluation and planning. So it takes into consideration, um, what we have for infrastructure here for trails and for making our community bicycle-friendly, what we do to encourage and promote bicycling in our community, our planning for the future, and then what we do in the schools as well. So our Safe Routes to School Plan, our Parks and Trails Plans, all those plans really do make a big impact on this certification for us. So, big collaborative effort between the city, the school, the community, all those involved.
Well, I'm sure we got a big plus for the Walk and Bike to School Day, right?
That's right, and only because you were there, Mr. Mayor. Do you want to add anything, Sarah?
Um, I just want to thank everybody for their support for our, the network of bike and trails that we have here in the community, and I think residents and visitors alike appreciate what we have here in Hutchinta- Hutchinson to offer, and that you can get from one end of town to the other end of town, um, through our trails network. So I think we should all give ourselves a big round of applause because it's, it's because of all of us here that see the value in this, of what it brings for our residents and, and our visitors to our community alike.
Well, you know, we do have a professional trail inspector here, right, Chad?
About my wife?
No, your, your, your son usually is the one that-
He's a playground inspector.
He's a playground, yeah. Thanks, lady.
Well, thank you, guys, your staff and everyone for work on this, so.
All right, now we can move on. Public comment. Uh, citizens addressing the council, just please come forward and state your name and address for the record. All right, approval of minutes, we have the council workshop of May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, and the regular meeting minutes of May of two thousand, May twenty-third of two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the minutes. Any other discussion? One in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval issuing massage license to Emily Truska of Nature's Touch. Massage located at nine oh three Highway fifteen south. B is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the American Cancer Society on August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three at the Maricau. C is approval of resolution number one five, six oh five, resolution to sell at auction unclaimed bicycles. Uh, D is approval of purchasing bag film for Creekside. E is, uh, approval of resolution number one five, six oh seven, resolution authorizing airport maintenance and operation agreement. Uh, F is approval of resolution number one five, six oh eight, resolution authorizing business development infrastructure application. J is approval of engineering agreement with S E H. H is approval of S E H supplemental agreement. That's the SWC resilient grand project. Um, I is approval of purchase of truck and dump body. J is approval of purchase of manhole lining repair contract. And K is claims appropriations and contract payments. Does anybody want anything pulled off?
Motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve the agenda. Agenda, any other discussion? One in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll say nay. Motion carries. Um, we'll skip down to communication requests and petitions, pavement management report.
Good evening, Mike.
You have that effect, Mike.
What was that, Pat?
I said you have that effect.
I have, I do have that effect.
So, good evening, mayor and council. Um, really, I want to give credit to John Olson, who had put this, uh, report together, and I had hoped to be here tonight to present it. But, uh, he is here in spirit, and I do want to say too, he is doing well and recovering well. So, uh, we have seen him, uh, I think he's getting a little restless now, we're seeing him more and more, uh, probably more than we should be, but, uh, he is doing well. Um, just want to take a few minutes to give you highlights. I know you have this report in your packet, um, so I don't want to belabor it, but do want to point out a few things, um, for folks. Um, and really, this graphic, I think, is especially important to show is the value of preservation, that that dollar spent on preservation techniques, and we've got a number of them being demonstrated this summer, do a lot to save and extend the life of our pavement in the community. So John has especially been aggressive, and we've gotten even more aggressive with this bio-based. You've heard the replay is the product. We've got a couple of options, so we get good competitive pricing with it. Um, but we do a lot of our road surface with that, especially newer road surfaces. Uh, we'll do it two and three times in those first ten to twenty years, um, by which we can offset a lot of the other, uh, more aggressive tactics like milling overlays. So, crack sealing, um, is a lot of the type of work, too, that we'll do. That's usually a little bit more of a kind of a spot-type repair in a road surface before it gets too bad. Fog seals, um, are another, uh, strategy as well as spot and area patching. Um, surveys and inspections are something we've been very aggressive about also over the last, uh, few years. Um, I would say over the last probably twenty-five, thirty years. We are again, uh, this is the third year, uh, and every third year rotation that we're starting that, we've just started. To Lynn and Sarah's point about trails, um, we've actually added trails, um, to that, um, list of inspections, um, this year also. So, um, Good Point, uh, is a company that does that for us or that work. They've already started, so we're, I would say, who, uh, close to halfway through, um, on the road surface and, um, probably about a third of the way through on our trail surfaces. So, um, that's something we're, we're doing, and then that is what kind of drives our overall, um, strategies. Um, not only as far as funding goes, but our projects, our CIP, it informs that as well as the other work, uh, that we do from year to year, especially on the preventative maintenance side. Overall, the network is in good condition, as you saw, roughly seventy-five miles, you know, that we rate. Um, about thirteen percent of it is what we would put in the poor to marginal categories. Um, adequate to, you know, good to excellent, um, is what the rest of the network looks like. The seventeen percent is typically what we're, we're trying to get at. But again, a lot more of our effort goes towards the, the, the better, um, the upper tier of that, um, type work. So again, going back to that bio-based application, um, is a good example of where that, that work is being done. And this is really a kind of the final slide itself, is again, some of the current projects that are addressing some of the backlog. You know, you've got examples of, you know, partial to total reconstructs, like what we're doing on Roberts Road. That project, by the way, is moving along nicely. We're about a month ahead of schedule. Next week, we hope to be paving the path there, trail. Um, curb and gutter to follow, and then the road surface to follow it. So over the next three to four weeks, we should be getting close to buttoning that project up. Um, you'll see, uh, you know, other preservation techniques, like we're doing on the bridges, where it's a lot of cracked sealing, uh, filling in some other imperfections, and then a good sealing. Uh, we've got three of the five bridges, um, near done. Fifth Avenue will be finishing up here over the next, uh, couple of weeks. Um, we've got a little bit of cure time in there, so you won't see a lot of activity after this week. Um, but, uh, that project's coming along, they'll move on to Adams, uh, which will again, will be a couple of days, and then to School Road, which again, will be about, probably a three-to-four-week timeframe, um, but done in plenty of time before school. Um, challenges, we certainly know this past winter presented some. Um, there's really two things that kind of affected us, winters themselves, and one like this year. Um, you know, third highest, uh, snow total, um, in probably the, you know, last hundred, hundred and fifty years itself. So we were on those roads a lot. Second Avenue, uh, Market Street, um, you know, Dale certainly showed the effects of that. And then, as John's talked about before, a generation of, you know, seal-coated roads that have just failed prematurely. And we've got quite a few of those, and I would say about thirteen percent, that's what you could probably attribute a lot of that, you know, poor, uh, portion of that network is coming from seal-coated roads that just didn't perform to the life expectancy, um, that we would have expected. Um, next steps, again, survey is underway, as we've talked about. That will wrap up again early fall. That will then kind of drive and inform our CIP as well as future projects. Strategy shift, again, in terms of funding and what we have available, you know, again, there's the operational versus capital, um, budget, you know, amount, Roberts Road, very large capital project versus a lot of the work that we'll do in-house or more of the pa- um, spot repair. Again, we've had goods, uh, community support for a level of funding for, so being able to do that, we've seen certainly an erosion of our buying power, just as everything has gone up, all the inputs, all the other auxiliary things that go with it, from streetlights that go with most of our projects, et cetera, um, take away our buying power of just plain street maintenance. So being able to support that, um, you know, potentially increasing the funding for is certainly something we would, um, you know, lobby for. And then I want to mention, too, the complete streets policy work. Uh, this is something kind of a planning effort with Dan Jokum and his staff, is just reevaluating our overall policy, our priorities and things out, and that's work we'll be doing this summer, kicking that off in a week or so. Um, so that is it, otherwise, unless you have any questions.
Mike, I think the, the biggest take out of this report that we do every year is really there's a method to the madness. Correct. When it comes to streets that we identify and the work that, that we do. You know, sometimes we have interesting feedback from the public and, and why we're doing what we're doing, and there, there is a reason behind it. And I think the nice thing about this report is that it really does highlight every street in town. It's something that we look at, it gives a condition, so if, if a resident may go, well, I think my road's horrible, they can go and look, and this report will say, yeah, maybe it is, or actually, we view it as good or adequate, and this is the reasons why we do based off of our, our analysis. But I, I think it does, except provide that good feedback for staff that then helps drive the CIP. This is really what helps put those projects in the next, you know, four to five years out there.
There's other things, too, man, you kind of allude to it, you know, and so, uh, you look at like the Clifton Heights neighborhood. It's probably one of our worst areas as far as pavement conditions, been in decline the last couple of years. But the Stormwater Grant you, you provided tonight's support for, the, um, SWC or the Stormwater, um, you know, that grant will basically study the stormwater impacts and that whole watershed. And right now, it would suggest that we maybe have to do a, a complete reconstruct or a partial reconstruct to upgrade the storm sewer. Staff has the hunch that it's probably not so much an issue of the whole network, as well as maybe a little bit of a bottleneck at the lower portion. So some very, you know, uh, an intensive study could rule out a very intensive paving project versus more of a milling overlay that would bring that up, but at a much less amount. Again, residents would think, have, do you just not see this? And it's, we have, but we've got a really great study that will inform that and really better inform it, so that we get the best value for that dollar. Um, and so it's a good example of one, um, in that regard that stands out. Um, but we do have a plan for, you know, a project that will hopefully approve here later tonight, um, this maintenance overlay. Yet another kind of a strategy, and more of a hybrid strategy in some ways. It's not complete milling overlay, um, but it's much more aggressive than just spot repair also. Um, so it's kind of another tool in the toolbox.
I know, Mike, you, you kind of touched on it, but the, the bridge repair, I, of course, my wife, actually, the second avenue or right by it, so they were working on it, then they left it for a long time, and I said, well, they sealed it, but they have to let it cure before they can. So that's, uh, a couple-week progret- uh, process, you said?
Yeah, you know, the second avenue, and I would say School Road, as they kind of got your contractor, we had not worked with previously. At the end of the day, it probably could have been a one-week project. It became a two-week project in that case, um, but kind of lessons learned and kind of their strategy, too. I think Adam Street, which will be a very similar process to what they used on those two bridges, um, should not take as long. School Road and Fifth Avenue are really going to be more of where the curing time and the amount of patch that they have to do, that's where the curing will be more of a case. Here, it was more of just a staging, getting the right crew to follow the right crew and to have shrunk that timeline from two weeks to one week. Memorial Day holiday probably played a bit of a role, you know, at the end of it. It, I think, one opened Wednesday, one opened Thursday, but it felt like going through that weekend was longer than it should have been.
Oh, don't worry, it was still my fault, so it wasn't your fault at all.
Go ahead, go ahead, go.
Anything else for Mike?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Unfinished business, uh, second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-three dash eight thirty-nine, ordinance amending chapter thirty-one point two-nine, Public Arts Commission.
Mayor Council, you guys have conducted a first reading of this ordinance at your last meeting, there hasn't been any changes to it. Um, once again, this kind of just addresses some of the, um, Supreme Court decisions regards to free speech, and just adjusting some of the roles of the Public Arts Commission. So staff for that, so you consider a second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Make a motion to approve it? Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Uh, custom questions for the two thousand twenty-three National Citizen Survey.
Yeah, Mayor Council, um, we discussed this a little bit at our last meeting. There were some comments about, uh, you know, sales tax options, and so I put together some additional option questions for you to consider, and then as I kind of noted in my legislative update to you, I'm not sure with the fact now that there's going to be a moratorium in place in sales tax for the next two years, if the whole process could be completely different by the time we get around to, um, looking to actually make a decision on it. So I'm not sure if we still have a desire. And I think the questions are still valuable, if you want to pick any of them, but I just wanted to, to note that, that we may be looking at a completely different process, you know, three, four years, um, from now. But want to at least get this in front of you, or maybe there was something else that came up that you had a desire to ask the, the citizens of? Um, but we really kind of want to be able to select that so we can move forward in getting that, um, that survey out. And we don't have to provide any custom questions, but, um, it's an opportunity for us if we, if we do, so.
I don't know, I think there's still value in the information you're trying to get with those questions, even though we might not do it for two years.
Sure.
And even though there's a moratorium right now, I mean, you never know, that can change, too.
Yeah, uh, you know, I think there's still going to be, well, we know there's still going to be requests for, for sales tax. Um, I think what we'll find out is just the process. My opinion is I think the process is going to change, and we just don't know what that process is going to be right now. Okay, just looking for direction from you, if there was a, like I said, I think we probably have the room for probably three questions. If you wanted to add, doesn't need to be three, or if there was a, even a combination of one or two that you would like to see, um, included. Just wanted to be, you know, staff was able to put together some options for you.
So what was staff trying to, um, by asking about the electric cars and stuff, just like we're going to add charging stations?
Um, I think, I think something has to do with the Sustainability Committee and just their desire to kind of look out towards the future, and what is going to be the, the need for the community moving forward? I think that's, um, that's what I took from what John gave me for feedback, so.
I'm fine with the questions, the optional questions as presented.
As in the sales tax, or are you talking about?
Overall.
All of those? So, because I don't know if we would have room for all of them, I'm thinking we probably have room for three.
All right.
Um, and I will note that question number two and number three, we did ask in our last survey. So we do have information on that.
Oh, I think number three is really important, because it seems to be something.
Sure.
Everybody talks about all the time. Um, if we have to cut one, I would cut number four.
Sure.
I would agree with that.
And then on the sales tax question, I don't know if there's a need to do all three. I kind of just put three options out there, if there was one of those that you liked better over the other. Or you could even do two, I kind of set it up, or if you wanted to, uh, for question one or two, and then number three could almost be a follow-up to that.
See, question two and three kind of get you in the same spot.
Sure.
In my opinion, I don't think we need to ask both of them.
No, that's fine.
I think number three is more valuable, because that has a little more meat to it.
Not to try and add, but I think four is kind of important, because we're going to get a lot of pressure from, I mean, utilities going up, I think we'd be interested in whether or not people are looking at electric vehicles. I'm not in that group, but I mean, we've talked about, you know, maybe the pressure to add more charging stations, that might come from the state. Just my thoughts on that. Might be some valuable information for which way the city goes as far as providing those, um, plug-ins.
So Matt, refresh my memory, how often have we done surveys in the past?
Do you remember, four years? We can do them more often than that if we want to, but that's better.
Historically, every four?
Every four years, yeah.
So, where are we at? I don't hate number four, you know, if that feels important, we can.
So there's a, appears to be a desire for question three. Um, the third question under the sales tax group? The third question under the sales tax group. Correct?
Number three?
Yeah.
I would say yes.
Yeah. And then potentially four and five. What this, if there was one of those questions, four or five, that you would say take off if there wasn't room, is there one of them?
Could you add an EV?
To the.
Line to number five instead of having it broke out as a second?
Sure. I can play with that, so.
Add part of four to five, you mean?
Yeah, just add an EV.
Line, another bullet point?
Sure.
Do they limit how many bullet points you can put in a question like number?
No, it's just space. You just get to space.
Sure. Yeah, I would just cut one of those bullets in number five if you need to.
Okay.
I would say maybe the recreation activity. One.
Okay. So then I would just ask the council that for the custom questions, what I'm hearing uh, from the list that we've included would be question three. Combination of question four and five, then option three under the sales tax. And that is a motion to be included in the National Citizen Survey for twenty twenty-three.
So moved. I would second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carried.
Then I anticipate we probably start seeing surveys go out in July. So just for the public, we would encourage your participation. We always have a high, you know, participation rate. I think it's usually in the upper forty percent. Just imagine what what type of feedback we get if it could be fifty, sixty, seventy percent. But um, I guess you'll start seeing prior information on that in the next month or two. So, thanks.
So that that will go out in the.
I think there's, I think it's seventeen hundred, no, it's it's so it's a scientific survey. So they, it's a random, or there's more than just random, but there's, I think, seventeen hundred homes that gets selected for um, the sampling. So. So it's usually it's a direct mailing and then there'll be an option to do it online with those direct mailings, so.
So we can kind of hit that online, feel hard?
Um, yeah, potentially, I said, but it's going to, what what what's going to be is that you're going to get a direct mailing and they'll give you the option to fill out the paper or do the online one.
All right. So if you don't get selected randomly, you're.
Yeah, you just weren't lucky that year, so.
You're unlucky, whatever.
Sure.
All right. Thanks. Uh, new business, uh, we have resolution number one five six oh six. Resolution accepting bid and awarding contract for the two thousand twenty-three maintenance overlay. Leading number six, project number twenty-three dash oh seven.
I think, Mike, this one's a.
Mike, this one yours.
Yes, real quick, uh, me, so, um, again, uh, very competitive bids with this project. So we look for uh, your support of, you know, the bottom, uh, three bids, I think had a spread of about five thousand. Were under the uh, uh, estimate, um, so very competitive in that regard. Again, as I mentioned, this is a maintenance overlay, something we don't do a lot of in this regard. This will remove about four to eight feet from the curb. They'll do a little bit to preserve, if not, um, better the crown of the road. So it should enhance the drainage and things of it. Um, Second Avenue, where we saw a lot of winter damaged Dale portions of. Um, and then also Market Street will be kind of our main areas of focus this year. So some pretty good stretches, but it should really bring up the rating of those stretches of road also in the process. So um, see, we're looking for your support of it unless there are any questions.
I think the community would have a hundred percent approval rate of this one, so I'll make it a motion to approve it. I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Mike.
I think I've explained to citizens eight hundred and ninety-five times what's wrong with the pavement on Second Avenue. So this will be good.
Thank you.
Save you some time.
Yeah.
Letter of intent for the Hutchinson Event Center.
Who's going to take this one, so?
Good evening again, Mayor Council. Um, city staff have been working with represent representatives from Hutchinson Health Partners to work on um, the future ownership of the Hutchinson Event Center. Included in your packet this evening was a letter of intent um, provided between the City of Hutchinson and Hutchinson Health Partners to um, to speak to the future ownership of this building. And the letter of intent will remain open until either, open by either party until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Um, currently, um, staff are working jointly with Hutchinson Health Partners to do a facility conditions assessment on the building and work through um, what it will look like for that building. So we're just um, requesting this evening, city council authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign the letter of intent. And so we can continue working with Hutchinson Health Partners on the future ownership of the Hutchinson Event Center.
Mayor Council, just to add to it, I think with the amount of work and effort that both the city and hospital put in, that was kind of what led to this um, letter of intent. Um, and that was kind of the direction given to staff from the council, probably two years ago now, was to work with the hospital on the sale of this. Couple of things for you guys to keep in mind and even for the public, one of the reasons that we're partnering with them on the condition assessment is that when that facility was built by the city back in two thousand, we received a million dollar, was it bond from the state? And the state has told us that if we no longer use that as the event center, we need to pay that back. Whatever up to that million dollars, whatever we sell it for, if we sell it for, if we sell it for a thousand bucks, we got to pay the state back a thousand. We don't owe them a million, but um, we're hoping that we can potentially get out of that. We believe the useful life of the event center, not necessarily the building, but the event center has come to an end. And it'd be our desire that any money that gets exchanged, we can keep here locally and that it doesn't go back to the state. So that's um, part of what we're working with the hospital on. But I think it's also important that there is the possibility that that if we do sell that, that we won't see any of that, of that money, depending what that price ends up being. I know it's a conversation I've had with our local senator, um, about potentially seeing if we can look to to get out of it. And I think it's something we'll continue to to work on too, but I just wanted to be upfront with both you and the public on that as well.
And also noting that all of this year and then in twenty twenty-four, the operations of the Hutchinson Senior Center will still continue to take place in its current location, operating as is, and will continue to keep the public in the senior center um, in the know of the future plans of that building so that they can know where they will be able to operate out of, knowing that that's a priority of ours.
Thank you for that information. I was just going to say that we do have a plan for the senior center.
Yeah.
Do they know what the plan, I stopped by last week just to have a, there was a card game going on, but I interrupted it. Uh, to ask how they're felt about it and they were very, they were encouraged by it. They know that there's going to be a solution for a senior center. And that's something I said we wouldn't overlook, so.
Yeah, and we've shared with them now that operations will remain constant and the same through twenty twenty-four. So we will continue to update as we know more.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Matt, has our um, Senator given any indication, one way or another, that he might be able to get something done?
Um, all he's told me was that he was going to talk with with whoever he needed to at the state and that was the last I heard. And I think, you know, part of what I want to be able to do is have some more data or facts behind it to be able to show that, hey. That's one thing to say, we believe the useful life of the event center has come to an end. Um, but I I want to be able to show some of that from a dollar standpoint, that with the hopes that we can potentially convince somebody at the state that 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 useful life has has come to an end, so.
Entertainer motion?
Motion to approve letter intent with the event center.
I'll say it.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Both, nay. Motion carries. Uh, governance, we have the Public Library Board minutes uh, uh, from the April two twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Chief Jefferson, do you have anything for us tonight?
Well, how about an update on the police station?
Well, you might as well just do it now then, so. That was what I was going to give the update on, so.
Well, I'd rather have it from Chief Jefferson.
I get it, I get it, so.
Well, good evening, Mayor Council. Um, update on the police station. Hoping the fire chief would still be here to see if we passed our fire inspection today. But uh, if uh, that was passed today, um, we have a inspection by the DOC tomorrow morning. Uh, and I've been told if we pass that, we will get a conditional occupancy, a certificate of occupancy or a temporary certificate of occupancy. Which means we can start to move in. My plan um, will be to do somewhat of a media blitz uh, next week then. Put it out on our Facebook page as to when we're going to have public open houses and that type of thing. Um, tentatively Tuesday afternoon, uh, the twenty-seventh, I think. Um, we would then have a dedication ceremony at that point. Um, and then ha- have our uh, public open houses that e- afternoon and evening. And then that following Thursday, uh, all day long. We'll schedule specific time slots during those days so the public can show up at a certain time and know they'll be able to get a tour of the building. And obviously the public won't get to see all the parts of the building, but the majority of them we will show. Um, and again, I've I've said it before, we're the ones that get to occupy it, but it's their building. So and they, I feel strongly that they should have an opportunity to see what they paid for, so.
Yeah, we're looking at kind of that week of the twenty-six as, like I said, there'll probably be some sort of a, an open house for elected and staff. Um, and then uh, kind of a ribbon cutting ceremony and stuff. We're just trying, we want to make sure that everything passes before we actually get those those dates out, so. More to come on that, so.
Very, thanks, Chief.
Anything else?
BMV is not at the same time, is it?
Um, my understanding is they will be moving the first week of August. Have some other logistical things they have to take care of first, but.
Anything else, Chief?
All right, thank you.
Mike, do you have anything else for us tonight?
I've taken enough of your time.
Okay. Mr. Sabora.
I don't have anything else tonight.
All righty. Pat, let's start with you tonight.
Uh, well, there's tons of stuff going on. Water Carnival Week. Uh, the tractor pull, which uh, it's a national thing that I guess just by the paper, it's like voted the best deal in the nation. I know it's noisy as heck. Father's Day, busy weekend. Everybody have fun.
Thanks, Pat. Chad?
I didn't have anything extra.
All right, Kim?
Uh, we, thank you for coming to the Veteran Business Outreach Center first.
I was going to have you talk about that a little bit, so.
So we had four veterans, four, five, five veterans from around the state who came in last Thursday uh, to our Economic Development Center and they went through the eight hour training uh, that we presented. That certifies them. They get a certificate to go to Mississippi State University for a free six month this course on business management and business finance. They also, that's the initial course uh, that the small business SBA uh, has set for veterans to be able to gather benefits and use different financial benefits as well as help with writing uh, business plans, the whole works there. That's open to veterans and their families. So it was great to see uh, four or five veterans. The head of the SBA for the state here in Minnesota was there, uh, and the VIBAC directors from this region. So we're pretty excited about that. We'll plan another one here. Uh, normally we try to plan those quarterly, so, thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Dave, you got anything?
I have nothing to say, thank you.
All right, Matt?
I've got a couple of different, some different items to talk about, so bear with me here. Um, first off, uh, Juneteenth is Monday and so that is now a state holiday, so city offices will be closed on Monday. Um, a reminder for the council, we do have a workshop planned before our next council meeting at four o'clock. That's on our growth planning study. Um, and I know Dan will be giving um, that report. And I know we can make it public now, um, and Ellen is here, but, and I did share with the council that there was a pledge for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for um, a new baseball stadium that that came forward to the city if we make a decision to to do that project. And so that's a huge donation, um, that's from Citizens Bank and the Birch um, Foundation. And and so that was great and surprising. Um, and then the last thing, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. I did send out both the council and staff kind of a summary of uh, what went on at the at the legislature. And I think it's just important to to touch on some of that. I also gave you a document tonight. It's kind of a summary from the league. But I want to touch more on, you could want to say the good, bad, the indifferent when it came to the city. Some of the good um, is that we will be seeing an increase of about four hundred thousand dollars in local government aid. That's an annual increase, um, which has inflation built into it as well. Um, and then there's uh, going to be a one-time uh, public safety payment that that we're going to get. It's about six hundred and forty thousand dollars that we're supposed to get towards the end of this year. That's specifically specifically supposed to go towards public safety um, aspects of it. And then there's also going to be um, affordable housinging. It's going to be, I think roughly sixty-five thousand the first two years and that's going to get cut in about half from there on out. Um, which when you start thinking about the cost of housing, that doesn't get you too far, but it's something. Um, and so those are some of the new revenue sources that are going to be coming our way along with the DMV. Did see some increase in fees, which will help with uh, their operation. We touched a little bit about the the two-year moratorium on on local sales tax with the plan to have that studied by the legislature. And I think there's supposed to be a report given to them um, in twenty twenty-four, which I would assume will probably help lead towards potentially new legislation on sales tax in twenty-four and and twenty-five. Some of the things that will, um, you know, that will cost the city and the taxpayers is the the paid family medical leave bill. Uh, that was approved. Um, you know, but that tax won't actually go in until twenty twenty-six. Um, we'll have to start reporting our wages, I believe, next year. Um, and then on top of that, there is the 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 sick and safe time. Um, most of that we already actually uh, do with our employees. It's probably going to impact our part-time and seasonal employees uh, the most. There's a lot of things that, you know, we're still, you know, trying to learn about. There's some updates in in the building code. And I always like to highlight that because a lot of times the city gets blamed for, you know, additional costs that really get passed down by the state and we're just complying with the with the building code. One of the unique things is that 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 came out of it is our requirement for to allow native grasses. Um, and I don't know, our native landscape, our natural landscape. So the big question is going to be is what does that have to do with our lawn grass ordinance and the impact that that's going to have? So there's still some things we have to look into that, but I I think just to be upfront. I mean, you get some of those calls about my neighbor's lawn grass, we may be running into issues with uh, requirements now to allow natural landscaping. Um, and the arguments that may be made.
No more bowling.
In regards to.
This could cause some friction, I think.
And 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 I'll be honest, I haven't had time to dive into that one to to know all of it. Um, there are some new voting requirements requiring that now you're able to start voting eighteen days prior to the election date. Not just absentee, it's actual voting in person. So we're going to have more staffing. Well, right now it's, I don't think it's been determined by the county. We believe it'll probably pass on to the city. Um, and then I think the big thing, I I want to say the big thing, the one we get a lot of questions on is the adult use cannabis bills. And I tried to provide a pretty good summary on, there's not a whole lot that we can do as a city outside of potentially restrict the amount of businesses that come in, the and the location that they go. Um, but I provided a, hopefully a good enough summary for you to kind of take a look at all of that. There's going to be some things we're going to have to obviously bring back to the council to get some direction on. You know, what type of regulation, even though it's limited, does the council want to look to do when it comes to adult use cannabis? And then especially with some of these new monies, you know, staff, I think will be working on some potential recommendations on where those funds could potentially be distributed or to to help fund. So, so, you know, even as a league notice was, I think, a record year for for bills. Um, so there's all, and I would say in my tenure, it's probably had some of the most biggest impacts on on a city since I've been doing this. Like I said, some of it good, some of it bad, um, but um, sure, I learned a lot more over the the next month or so, but this one. But I just wanted to get that out there. There are a lot of things that will have an impact on the city uh moving forward, and so. If there's anything specific that you want staff to start, you know, working on right now or, or, or bringing to your attention, um, just please let us know. Um, the one thing, and I, I think it's important that we're likely not gonna see a lot of the adult use cannabis until twenty twenty-five. Um, just because they have to get the, the office at the state set up. Um, we can't issue any registrations until they get a license from the state, and the state saying we're probably not gonna be issuing licenses until January of twenty twenty-five. Um, so.
I was meant something to the effect that as we are a municipal liquor, they could be designated as, if the city wanted, as the municipal dispensary.
Yep, that is, that is something that um, we can now sell, you know, THC infused drinks at the, at liquor store, but we also could get into the business of being dispensary. Now, the league has kind of cautioned cities, uh, they're not quite sure what the liability of that is gonna be yet. Um, I said there'll be more, that'll come out on that too in the next year, I'm sure, but yeah, it's.
I think as being just off sale, and I'm only speaking because I've been in this stuff for a long time. It's a lot easier for just off sale as opposed to cities that have an on-off license because they need to be kind of both alcohol and, you know, the cannabis. So it's something that twenty percent comes back to us the way it's written, I think.
Yeah, so.
Something that.
Has kind of started selling.
Um, I, I actually, I believe they did last week start selling that.
They, there's some, yeah, there's a Delta eight and Delta nine, one's hemp derived and one's uh actual weed derived. So yeah, it's become legal. There's a lot of, as I do have this stuff to sell, a lot of confusion right now. You know, a lot of cities are not knowing what to do and, and but it is, it is legal.
You know, and some of the confusion too is that it's still not legal federally.
Federally.
And so then you run into issues.
It has to be a cash basis.
Yeah.
Well, I think the uh chief would appreciate, uh, cause I had a call last week that somebody got busted, and I said, were you driving under the influence? Yes, I said, that's still the law. I'm sorry, but.
Yeah. Still can't, there's still, yeah, I mean, and, and actually I think the law even says you can't be consuming it while you're, you're driving. So there are, there are aspects of the law that, yeah, still. They just read what they wanna read, is what you're saying too. And so, yeah, I mean, I, hopefully there was some good information for you to look at, cause there's just a lot. Especially um, like I said, I sent something out this afternoon, and the league did a really good job of kind of a question, uh frequently asked questions when it comes to adult use cannabis, and I think it does a really good job of probably addressing every least scenario that we know of right now, but um.
And will probably evolve, I mean, up until they finally issue a dispensary.
So Tom, um, sorry to put you on the spot, but like, would you, what is the law, like if you chug a couple of those THC seltzers and go for a cruise, like what?
Yeah. Um, if there's no way, there's no easy way to tell or there's no way to prove private Asia evidence.
Yep.
Currently with THC like there is with alcohol.
Yep.
So unless they're um, obviously under the influence or impaired, meaning they're having difficulty driving. It's a problem.
Yep. So more or less, you can probably, whether or not you pass a field test probably.
Well, and there isn't the standard ice cream test for marijuana, that's the problem, so.
Yep, sorry. Like I said, I, you know, um, league put out a good resource. I, I had put something out, you know, a couple of weeks ago. If you had anything specific questions, we'll be coming forward in the future. I think the big question for you guys to be thinking about is what type of regulation, even though it's limited, do you wanna do locally when it comes to adult use cannabis? And I'm sure at some point here we'll have a, a conversation on that. There is the opportunity for us to put a moratorium in place uh up until January of twenty twenty-five. You know, to me, the interesting thing is that nobody's gonna be able to get a, a license from the state probably until that time. So whether or not you wanna put one in place, it's, it is available to as an option, so.
But, but that would be a concern of mine at least, because the state is saying that they're not gonna be issuing these licenses until twenty twenty-five. But if for some reason they do get their act together and they start issuing those licenses prior to that. You know, then, then we're gonna have to be issuing those registrations, and are we gonna be ready to do that?
Do you think, Mark, that um, so they're issuing the, the way it's saying, January one, twenty twenty-five, but will people be able to apply? Do we need to have our ducks in a row? That they can apply in twenty twenty-four? We don't know.
Well, the, the thing is they can't even apply until they have a state license here locally.
Gotcha.
So that's gonna.
Evolve too.
Yeah. You know, I think our goal is to hopefully have something to you by the end of this year for consider, to consider. I think that would just be prudent of us, um, to where you could even potentially change it if you had to in twenty twenty-four if something came out that we didn't expect.
There are, I know I talked to some s- uh leaders in Colorado and Oregon just to see what they faced as the hurdles, especially Colorado. Cause they were kind of the first state that jumped that. If you talk to them, they give you a pretty good list of things to consider, so.
Yeah, and some of that might not even be, you know, depending on what's allowable from the state law right now too, so. Always that's it for me, so.
Mary, I really don't have anything, but uh get out and there's a lot of festivities going on in Hutchinson, so get out and enjoy. And uh, we'll hear the tractor pull and truck pull this weekend.